Please be the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, October 28th. I prepare to have a stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before, as the agenda is presented, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members at this time as it relates to the agenda? There's none. The gentle stand is presented. We do have a public hearing that sets it for 6:15, so wherever we are at within our general business meeting, we will have to interject to go to that public hearing. Let's see, nothing on the sheriff's or detective reports. Going to take us to, actually, is there anybody in the crowd that has anything specific to address the sheriff's office with any issues? If you would, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lina Hayes, H-A-Y-H.
Rita.
Fourteen twenty-nine St. Butler Street northeast, four-four-seven Monmouth.
Thank you. Specifically, your issue for the sheriff's department is?
My next door neighbor has been causing me a lot of trouble. I don't know if you guys have heard of Lina, but I woke up six o'clock.
Is it possible just to state, ma'am? Is it possible if you could just?
Well, I have Parkinson's and I don't talk very much.
Oh, okay.
Detective, very clear, ma'am.
Okay. I woke up at six o'clock Saturday morning and hearing this crackling sound. I looked outside my bedroom, moved about three feet, thirty feet from his house. He was fired, he was burning, rushing, yard waste, branches. So I called the fire department. Called the fire department, they showed up, and I could hear him hollering at them. When, as soon as he left, he started right back up again. So I called him back, and a few minutes later he got, and the sheriff was there. Two sheriff's cars and an ambulance. And he came and he told me that he drowned it out. And he told me what the rule of law was. They'd been there many times before, and as they pulled up and got out of the car, his own smoke bomb was going off. It was, I think, twenty, thirty feet behind their house. That far from my bedroom window, it was all through the house. So, my other neighbors were supposed to come tonight. I don't know where they are. There was a bunch of elves that were coming. Ever since they moved in, this has been happening.
Is your problem or question about him bringing the fire, the leaves, is that what it was?
That was the last thing he's done.
I mean, is that what you're, is that your concern?
I've got many, many concerns.
Chief, that's a fire issue, you can call the fire department.
Yeah, we, obviously, we were out there. What was the date of that?
Saturday morning.
This past Saturday?
Yeah. And, well, it's not just that. Yeah, I had the health department out too. He thinks he's a recycler, I think he's a hoarder, I think he's metal illegal. One of the deputies mentioned he's on the supervised release from prison. There's drugs. And I see him come and go in all hours of the day and night, at night especially, coming back with stuff in the car. His girlfriend was there at one time, she had a whole big garnment of scars with the tags on them. And that's the first time called the sheriff, I think. I watched him, and they came, my girlfriend and him, took this huge bass drum off the back of her pickup truck. It looked like a, it did look like junk. Like it was new, like hot, turned in silver. As fast as they took it off there, he's got a big white truck that sits in his driveway. They got it in there. And they had the junk cars that they had, there's this block art, back out of our driveway is very hard, and all the other people around there too. And we complained about that for a long time. The health department said if he didn't have any rotting food, he's got junk all over the backyard. His mud pits and dusty ones dry. And he woke me up in the middle of the night with his motorcycle, and it was like ten feet from my bedroom, that's his garage. I didn't know he had a motorcycle. And it was just so loud, and my dog and I jumped up out of the bed. I had to scream at him. And then he was working him all morning on his recycler pounding. And his garage is covered from floor to ceiling with just junk. And that big old white truck in the front is the same. But I've seen him come with like six, eight gold chains around his neck. I got my binoculars out so I could see what he was doing. He's got a little hidey-hovers all over his car, dark tinted windows, reaching the car to pull things out, and then he'd pop, and run back to the garage with them. There's just so many, just junk everywhere. He does recycle something. I've seen him, he tears washers apart, and then he'll, it's like he has a sale to make. He gets to a specific part, runs off and takes it somewhere. It's just like, like I said, I've got a whole list, I don't want to take up all your time. I'm sure my neighbors would show me.
Two points. Danny, have you ever received any complaints on the property act? Address as she's speaking.
We received complaints about the truck, it's licensed, it's dr- it's operable. The owner wasn't operating it for me, or what's on the ground.
Mother-in-law's truck.
Curiously tagged. The car is in the street, but curiously tagged. In terms of the bigger sheriff's issues.
Yeah. I guess she got the license, the mother-in-law's truck.
Jumping down.
He had a toddler there, and was chasing the dog down the street. That's the last time I saw the toddler there, his child. Grandma didn't know where the little boy was.
There are things that come involved, nothing that is ever, there's things.
We don't know what we can do about it. I have to live with this, and my husband's in stage of his age. He passes sleep in sometimes. Donny's out there pounding.
Okay, guys, we got.
Eric was talking. I saw him tear a washer apart in twenty minutes.
Danny, for the sake of the conversation here, can you circle back with Mrs. Hayes?
Yes, I'll do that.
Mrs. Hayes, if you'll provide, or Danny will follow up with you in regards to zoning related issues as far as, I mean, Bill, from a deputy's perspective, is there anything here that?
I mean, I think she's doing the right thing if we have an incident.
We have to, we can't, we'll never sell our house. If we have to sell our house, he says, oh, I don't give a shit. You know, I'm not afraid of him, I just gotta stand right up to him.
And when you have incidents, you're calling us and making us aware, and that's what you need to keep doing. If you see something that you think is a, you know, an issue.
It's a lot of junk, I think a lot of things are stolen. So his operation is on the other side of the driveway now, not in front of my home. A lot of his friends or people that come, it's my opinion, there are different ones all the time, with a lot of drugs. They watch, they see me watching them, so they went on the other side.
We'll have the sheriff's office follow up accordingly.
I can get out.
But that house was empty for six years, it was so peaceful. There was two older ladies that were there by that. Now, for all, we would never sell our house.
Okay. Is there anybody else that has anything to address for the sheriff's office? Okay, that's going to close out the sheriff's report, detective's report, there's nothing. That takes us to unfinished business. Mrs. Campbell?
Item number one is our resolution to authorize payment to Baker due card back Wiley and Matthews for legal services regarding case number two zero one three C V zero two five four five.
I will sub move.
Second.
This is the McDonald's case.
Unfinished.
It's unfinished, actually.
Any further discussion?
Just to let you know, this is coming right from our legal fund, so it will seem like our legal expenses are more, but they're truly not.
Eric, is that still pending?
They just argued, and I would, when I looked at the timeline typically with the fifth district appeals, I would expect the decision on that probably right before Thanksgiving, would be my guess. So they argued it orally in the, in the fifth district appeals.
Yep. That was September thirtieth?
Yeah.
Right before Thanksgiving, would be my guess.
If not, a little sooner. I think it's one they probably know is on a lot of people's radar.
Okay. So. Any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that's the end of unfinished business.
We'll be happy to keep with Ms. Campbell for the new business.
Thank you. Item number one is our resolution to adopt the attached revised model for defining indigent burial expenses.
I will sub move unfinished, I mean, business number one. Second.
Discussion.
I just want to point out that changes that were made is that the town, and this is after information received from the Funeral Directors Association and looking into the O R C and also the Ohio Township Association. It is, just to clarify, it's the township who does actually decide on the type of disposition of funeral services, if any, meaning between burial and cremation, depending on cost, it's up to the township, not to the indigent person's family. So that was added in there. The one thing I had to take out is that we were not allowed to cap our costs. Now, when I work with funeral homes, they understand it's an indigent burial, and we negotiate, and I'll call several places and get quotes for a reasonable price, but we can't say we're only going to pay three hundred dollars, and then the funeral home has a loss. So that has changed. So I've taken that out. And the last change is that included the attorney general's opinion in there that if a family member claims a body and contacts the funeral home, that even if they claim it and the person's indigent, that the township is still, has to pay for the cost. So those are the changes by law that I've put in there.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that's the end of new business.
Ms. Campbell, once again, take us to our fiscal officer's report.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal officer, number one, it's a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, that authorizes the payment of the pending warrants in the amount of seven hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents.
I will sub move. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Fiscal officer, number two, is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the payment of the regular payroll in the amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Fiscal officer, number three, is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the payment for the following medical claims as provided by healthcare express scripts.
I will sub move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Fiscal officer, number four, is the investment report.
In regards to the one investment came due on the twenty-third, what rates is it looking like?
We reinvested that on the first merit again. Jack gave the full two five. Some banks didn't really even offer anything. There were a couple of that in seed yards, but that's about the same as doing the Star Harbor Plus.
Okay.
Fiscal officer, number five, it's a request for a resolution for the release of fire escrow funds for the property at forty-two thirty-five Mill Branch Road northeast in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
I will sub move. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Anthony, I need to interject for, we're going to, I'm honest here, adjourn from our regular meeting to go to our public hearing regarding Lexington Farms, number five, the lighting district. And with that, is there anybody here that is to speak in support of Lexington Farms, number five, lighting district? No one? Anybody in opposition here to speak for the lighting district for Lexington Farms? Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt. Okay. Second, roll call, or discussion, roll call.
I can just briefly state, this is just with the new developments, it's one owner. I just started a new phase of it. So there's nothing, nothing special about it.
And the special, I think, with the one property owner now, he'll be paying the electric bill until the parcels are sold?
Yeah, as the owner, they get assessed the, they're satisfied, so.
This is the cul-de-sac at the end of Bellview, I think it's all, about seven miles, the altar is on this road.
Okay.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
That will adjourn the public hearing regarding Lexington Farms, number five, the lighting district. It is, you know, go back to our regular meeting at six seventeen. Then we'll pick up with the fiscal officer's report, number six.
Number six is a request for a resolution by the board to release the retainage for the gay company. This is for the fire station, I believe, that their portion of the work has been done and approved, and this completes the release of funds. That will be followed after.
I'll sub move, fiscal officer, number six.
Second.
Discussion. Chief, everything over there's operational, there's.
Yeah, I'm actually with the architect group to prepare for the final inspection for the one-year warning.
Any further? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Fiscal officer, number seven, this is a request for a resolution by the board to permit a new light to be installed in a current lighting district. There's no need for a hearing on that since the district's already created. This is to add one light, which A E P will install. The homeowners association is the requesting party, sending the signatures. It's at Nolbridge Street northeast and where Church Road.
So I'll make a motion to move on that.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And fiscal officer, number eight, is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the refund for overpayments for emergency medical services as requested by a hot billing.
I will sub move, fiscal officer, right.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Fiscal officer, number nine, is a request for a resolution by the board to approve the following transfers.
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And finally, fiscal officer, number ten, is a request for a resolution by the board to close out the capital projects for the Park Development Fund. It got closed out within ten years, everything over there at the Park Development Fund, or the Park Development has been, has been completed, and this money would transfer back into the general fund.
I will sub move. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that will conclude the fiscal officer's report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. Correct our minister, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. I have a resolution to pay the United States Postal Service for postage for the winter two thousand and fourteen Plain Township newsletter, and authorize payment in an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars.
I will sub move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And item number two is a resolution to pay Pinnacle Press for the printing of the two thousand and fourteen winter newsletter, in an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars, and authorize payment.
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion, just as pointed out, if you have any people that opt to take this electronically, I know, about two years.
Yes, and we can put it in the newsletter again, but it's not, it's not a lot. People like their heard copy.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
I heard the department assigned it tonight. Road, Road Department, I turn it over to Mr. Rice.
Mr. Chairman, item number one is a resolution to authorize the posting of tambourine parking for the lacrosse tournament in Diamond Park on the streets listed. It will be posted on Friday, October thirty-first, and taken down on Monday, November thirty.
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Item number two is to authorize the posting of tambourine parking for lacrosse tournament on the north side of Diamond Street from Middle Branch to Diamond Park on Middle Branch and Diamond Prospect on the west side of St. James.
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to authorize the posting of forty-five mile speed limit signs on Butler Avenue as per ODOT's traffic study, starting at the center line of Warner Church to point eight two miles west of Butler Avenue, going eastbound and westbound. This was done through the county, had a study done, had Warner Church Bridge, James, and just sent it to us the other day, and it's charged off the posting.
I will sub move. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Item number four is the renovation of the two thousand and fourteen paving. We were able to save a total of fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars because after receiving word from ODOT about the lining of Market Avenue, we were able to go back several hundred feet on a straight road that we didn't have to pave because they were putting turn lanes there when they did that project. And we were able to do some things with grinding that saved us some money. So I'm doing a very good job out there, grinding where we didn't have to, with basic roads that are shaped. We were able to save fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars.
Oh, he's a job, he's a job.
Sheriff will pay it for next year.
We're committed to this year.
I mean, for small.
Yeah.
There's not, there's not, kind of, it's not a lot.
All right, and item number five, last week, Mr. Lena, I think it was? Mr. Lena and I met, Stark County Engineers Office, Eric Rafez and Dave Florence, about the use of putting two trucks, an old station Ford, and along with Mr. Steinberg, we decided that there is room for the two trucks. We worked it out for our equipment to be stored there, but Roth needs for winter commitments on his equipment. They will have access only to the garage and the restroom, and they told Mr. Lena and myself that they will be getting out on our road quicker by this happening.
We're sure about that. Well, I know you're just on our salt. We're going to keep an eye on it.
Stock it as they hope.
Because back in the summer, back in the summer, I guess not earlier, I know Dave Horace had reached out to me on this, because he was looking at a couple of different spots throughout the county for the sake of hoping to improve response.
We were very clear on the fact that we don't see the proper response on roads like Easton, Mill Branch, that we're not questioning if it impacts for us. They will use our salt, they will reload their own salt into our bins as they use it. Actually, they're going to put hydrogen in to start before the season starts.
Three of the four drivers live close to this area. The other ones, not quite as far, but a little farther than the other.
The markets.
Exactly. The other three that they're going to use are close, correct?
Countywide.
So the three of them do live here, but we did specifically tell them that if it doesn't help the response time, then probably those trucks shouldn't be there because it'd be pretty hard to justify to our taxpayers that they're using our garage space, but the response time is not any better, so then, obviously.
You have room in the garage for them?
We do.
Yes, we worked it all out, actually, we're ready for them. They're going to have access to the garage and the restroom, so that's it, nothing else about here.
Yeah, Raj got space. Joe informed me that none of our, none of our equipment's going to be out because of theirs, because that would work. Our stuff is still in, protected, we had those two spots available. And again, we're hoping that the response time doesn't work, then we have a problem.
That's the key.
And they sure said that, you know, Easton, Mill Branch, Butler, not Butler, but Apple Grove.
Yeah, I'm not sure about Columbus Road, I'm not sure if that comes from out, and you just can't wait where they start that. But part of Apple Grove is coming from the airport still, where they start their route, so. But I know Mill Branch and Fifty-Fifth Street, you know, going down in harm.
Easton.
Easton, along Easton is coming out here.
All right. Well, yeah. Because usually, less than phone calls than we get, they want to know why those streets aren't cleared, and ours are.
Yeah, I get those, yeah, we get those, especially the hills on Easton, that all have directions.
You'll see on another chart.
Yeah, we're going to stay on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Closest road zoning department, turn it over to Mr. Volk.
Ladies and gentlemen, before you tonight, we have nuisance payments for five properties.
I will sub move on zoning one eight through you. Second, those, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill.
Can I take us to our parks department?
Just a simple recap tonight, gentlemen, the Bothwell Cup helds the eighteenth and nineteenth at Diamond Community Park. We had a hundred and twelve teams over two days. Parking could not have gone any better. I want to thank the road department and our deputies for their anticipation in helping us facilitate that. The tournament people couldn't have been more pleased with the way we run our facilities from top to bottom, inside and out, and we're very, very appreciative and thankful and overtly so. The field's held up phenomenally considering the weather we had, and we are approaching one more tournament this weekend.
So you're saying you wouldn't recommend allowing the park themselves?
I would never recommend allowing folks to park themselves moving forward, considering how great and how professional the road department is at doing it for us.
Again, probably, as always, at this time, I do commend what I witnessed on Sunday. The volunteers were very friendly, we got road guys out there, two great guys doing their job. The field was plush, beautiful activity, people seemed to be happy, concessions look good. I thought the job looked really all intact and in order.
Thank you. Anything else? That's all for the parks next one.
Mr. Steinberg, that's going to take us to communications. I'll turn that over to Ms. Campbell.
I actually have an issue.
How about that?
Yeah.
Sorry, just pass rate.
Different. No, it is kind of a, it is kind of a different issue. I've got PLAN, which is the citizens group, that they've been involved in a lot of the zoning and things like that. They submitted through Lisa King to me a request for a legal opinion. And Lou already knows where I'm going. Basically, what, there's kind of a misunderstanding, I think, in terms of what is, what my role is as your law director, and I just wanted to bring it for the record. Even reviewing the hard bias code again, I represent first and foremost the board of trustees. Attained by you, I represent you. I also represent township, department heads, and public officials. This is a request from a citizens group asking for a legal opinion on a zoning issue that ultimately may come back, will will come back in front of you. So I had an extensive conversation with one of the spokespeople for the group. I don't, I don't know that they were very satisfied with that answer, so the one thing that I said that I would do is I would talk to my board about it. Not in the sense that I would ask for your permission to give a legal opinion because I don't believe that I can, but in the sense that we would at least discuss what was requested and there would at least be a record of us having discussed it. Tell me what, what you know about this, what you don't know about it already. It's for the, the property, Danny, what's the, where's the property?
Cairo. It's, it's Cairo. We call it the Cairo property located between Diamond and Malquitham.
And what's, what's looking to be done there by a developer is to put in our first PV on an R six zoning designation. What they seem to be in this group very concerned about, and certainly rightfully so, is whether or not that can be undone. And from my review certainly of, go ahead.
I think we ought to stop the conversation right there because these are issues that's gonna come in front of this board and one if the zoning commission sends an approval one way or the other. Any discussion that we have right now could put influence on the decision-making of the board or the zoning commission.
Sure.
Not only that, any opinion that you would be able to give, you'll be able to give us at the time of the hearing.
That's right.
When it's appropriate, I don't think we should have this discussion any further until this, the decision's in front of the board.
Be happy to report that to the group, call the person I spoke with tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Communications.
All right. The item I have on communications is just notification of the Thursday, November 20th, Stark County Township Association meeting at 6:30 PM at the Stark County Health Department. And the sponsor and host is the Stark County Health Department, and it's getting to know Stark County Health. And that's all I have on communications.
That's gonna bring us to a portion of the meeting, public speaks. If you're here and you have a specific township-related matter, what you care to address as board of trustees, we ask that you state your name and your address for the record. We'll have three minutes, three minutes to present your, your specific issue. Is there anybody in the crowd that wishes to address? Mr. Bar, just take your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, my name is Roy Bar. I live at 1211 Thirty-Ninth Street Northeast, Canton, also known as Meadow Lake Golf Course. My residence is above the bathhouse at the Gulf area. I do have copies of my letter to the trustees, and may I approach the bench and give that to you now?
Absolutely.
They're all the same.
Into a right.
Thank you, sir. As you notice on the top, this letter is also going to Stark County Commissioners and the Canton City Council. It's related to the flooding at August 16th, 2014 at Meadow Lake Golf Course. For your information, there's a state of emergency at Meadow Lake Golf Course. Floodwaters have caused over $250,000 damage to the drainage at Meadow Lake. Silk, mud debris has spouted our golf course and our lake. We estimate another expenses of about $50,000. Meadow Lake has become the retention pond for the city, the township, and the county floodwaters. And there is no one that has ran it any right-of-way flood eases. Years ago, Joe Staret, Stark County Engineer, stated our forty-eight inch culvert would be more than adequate to handle the floodwaters as we were upstream from the forty-eight inch culvert at Markdale Road. This is no longer true. Since then, North Market Avenue is four-lane. Canton Plain Township have paved their roads, installed curbs, gutters, catch basins, storm drains, and the drainings west of the golf course reaches our golf course twice as fast. Nor is the culvert under Markdale Road able to handle the most recent flood. We're asking cooperation with the township, the city, and the county to solve this state of emergency. My recent contact with the Ohio Department of Service Agency indicated funds are available for stormwater infrastructure grants. I believe the key in solving this problem would be a new culvert under Plain Center Road Northeast. This could be a forty-eight inch or up to a sixty-inch culvert under Plain Center Road that would extend, extend past the driveway of the former Newton property, Newton Offingham. And I don't know the present owner's name, but he's built a big dirt pile alongside Markdale Road there. I don't think you guys are too happy with what he's done there, but that could be pushed out of the way, and it would, from that point on, could be here, then open ditch or culvert on over to Markdale, from Markdale Road, alongside the north side of Markdale Road to the Middle Branch Creek. And that would solve the problem. If the forty-eight inch culvert at Meadow Lake is replaced with the thirty inches, with the sixty-inch culvert, that's gonna send the floodwaters downstream. As stated prior, the culvert under Markdale Road is no longer adequate to handle the flooding. Culvert under Plain Center would be cost-effective because then they would not have to replace the culvert under Markdale Road. And I'm asking that Lou G. Basis, you appointed the appointment on this project. I do have a flash drive with me, and it could be used on any computer, I believe. This is done shot by Phillip, my son. Shows the floodwaters going over our Thirteenth Parkway, across our lake, and on downstream. At that point in time, I believe it was Mr. Gesi. Have, have you been over there to talk to Mr. Gesi recently?
Yeah, Joe Lassino went over and spoke with him.
Well, he was in his basement. And did he tell you this? The windows crashed, and he was almost killed, and was almost flooded in a home. And this is several times, you know, probably four, five, six times this has happened that this flooding has occurred. And the flash drive was shot by, shot by my son on his iPhone. Unfortunately, Phil doesn't talk when he's doing this flash drive. So if you want me to be here and go over this, explain it to you, I'll be happy to do that. The latter part of the flash drive actually shows the floodwaters going over our no road.
Was this the day of the big storm, Joe?
Yes. They also went across Market Avenue out of the daily.
Across Thirty-Ninth.
That's, that's the first one that's gone across Market Avenue that I know of. And that, I was alert when I saw all the traffic coming down Thirty-Ninth Street, and I'm wondering why is the traffic coming down Thirty-Ninth Street? Well, it's because Market Avenue was closed. And also, Markdale Road was closed. So even though, well, they came down across Thirty-Ninth Street, they had to turn around and go back the other way. So, be happy to answer your questions. I'll be happy to show you the flash drive or bring my computer or whatever, explain exactly what's going on at the time. But this, this last storm, we have another three or four places where this culvert's been destroyed. So I don't know how much longer it's gonna last, but the salt runoff for the winters and disflooded has practically destroyed this drainage across our golf course. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
I got a couple of questions for you, Mr. Bar.
Okay.
What year was that culvert put in across your golf course?
The golf course was changed from Dairy Farm to golf course in 1962.
So the culvert's actually over fifty years old? It's a still culvert, if I'm correct?
Right. It's a galvanized culvert. hindsight's always twenty-twenty.
Well, they didn't make or get a plastic bag for it.
Yeah.
Who sized the sixty-inch culvert to go under Plain, uh, Plain Center Road? Is that done by an engineer?
No, that's, that was my suggestion, because if you're gonna run a sixty-inch culvert across the golf course, it has to go someplace. And Bob Brennan doesn't want his property flooded, which is south of us, nor does the, Doug, uh, there's, you know, the old Beckland Farm or Turpin, Turpin Lake there.
Yes.
Now, his, his building, the water was up to his foundation on his building that he has down there on the, alongside the lake.
I seen it all that night.
I saw it all, okay.
In all of it.
I'm not telling you anything new that you already had known, you've been here before.
I, I had met with Mr. Gesi and Commissioner Regal.
Okay.
After they were contacted, trustee G. Basis and trustee Weydow. And I do know Mr. Regal is working on something. Mr. Lino might have more information on that because he has a contact meeting.
We are sending this letter to the Stark County Commissioners and the City Council.
With respect to the grant, do we know, I mean, have we looked at that at any time in the past that?
Yeah, our engineers are always hoping to get us grants.
Was there a grant?
It's a challenge, but in the past, some type of matching, matching contribu, matching contribution. Because I know historically, oh, we've looked at, looked at this, anytime we've really pressed the city, it can't, not certain things. Prove it, too bad, too bad.
Yeah, matching sometimes is part of the, you know, part of the problem, as you know, with other grants that we've tried to get for other areas that were flooded. This one here is, like I tried, it's Stark County, it's Canton City. Basically, the only water coming off Plain Road is Thirty-Ninth Street, so.
No, there's more than that, sir. There's Willadel Circle.
And that's small area right there.
That's small area, Willadel Circle.
And the ponds are in Plain Township that are affecting this. So, I mean, we're our part of it, but it's also the county's.
All, all the ground is in Plain Township.
Yeah, but the majority of the water that comes down through there, because I remember, I don't know if it was Joe, you and I, that, the one lady that has Flat Roof Ranch Home that sits on the east side of Market, opposite of that.
Off Thirty-Ninth.
Like they woke up the old Lankle, yeah.
Yeah, and I remember, because we had the city of Canton, the city of Canton there. I forget.
And Gary Connors from the county.
They did from Gary Connors, and essentially based upon that topography and the area around there, city of Canton knows a lot of that water that comes through there, but it was previously noted, once it's off, us wasn't there.
Once it leaves there, jurisdiction is no longer their issue.
Right. That's right. But also offer a ditch, it's not township's jurisdiction either.
That's a good.
You have to remember that. Well, the way the language is written on Sunday's offer of ditches, it says drainage ditch. And don't always have the county's name on it, so. That's what it's been in the past, but since, hasn't been that way for the last fifteen years, things have changed.
Would it be more cost-effective to remove that pipe and add an open flow again? And would it be more efficient?
Cost-effective, yeah.
Water would slow, would slow the water down.
But we still have problems with the open part of the ditch with the trees and all the stuff that gets washed down there, clogging it up.
No, I'm talking about, because I know, I know Mr. Bar, when you got back in 1962, you did that for the golf course across railways. I know a lot of golf courses today, because of the natural hazards, they have the culvert, culverts with bridges going over, over top of that. Would you be open to that idea? Because that would actually help the flow of that water and slow it down.
I don't think, I didn't, any study been on that.
Well, probably the water's gonna run faster through the pipe, and when it gets there, it's where, that's where it backs up.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's common knowledge that the open ditch, Joe, slows the water down. Plus a lot, you know, some of it gets absorbed.
Carries more water.
Carries more water.
It carries more water.
And a lot of it soaks in.
But today's pipe, the, 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 all your thing, plastic water goes through there very quickly.
Yeah.
The study was done by an engineering firm up in North Canton there.
CP?
Cooper?
Cooper, no, it wasn't Cooper.
CP?
Yeah, inventory, the cemetery, yeah, inventory. They've been advising us for quite a while about what we should or shouldn't do. It's got to the point where, you know. I'm just afraid this whole thing's gonna collapse someday.
I mean, but did Hammond Tree or anybody recommend about opening that back up and having the golf carts cross these bridges with other horses?
There is, the Thirteenth Parkway has quite a bit of fill across it there. And I don't know, there, there almost have to be some sort of pipe underneath that. I don't see how you could get down to the open ditch in that particular area.
Maybe just leave a pipe in that particular spot and open it up in the other end.
Well, I proposed a sort of a off-the-wall solution here. I don't know whether it's off the wall or not, but it seems practical to me that something like this would solve a lot of problems that we've looked at, and this gets the water down into the floodplain. The problem we have now is there's no floodplain where we are. The Gesi's house is not in the floodplain. And every time it floods, you know, the only thing you could do is to take the house someplace else, but you know, that's another project.
For the sake, for the sake, for the sake of pulling this all to a close with some type of next step or direction from Mr. Bar, can you take the lead, identify who to contact, city of Canton, as soon as, probably Gary, Gary Connors, and Commissioner Regal. Have all four, all four parties, Mr. Bar, city of Canton, Stark County Commissioners.
I believe that's.
Because otherwise, it'd be pieced together in conversations.
Get them all together.
That's why I'd like to leave it as somebody at least to be the appointment here, and I'd appreciate it if you would volunteer.
I would be happy to, because I, you know, being downtown commissioners, but.
They're the greatest historical authors on this board.
Now, my son Phillip is gonna, my son Phillip is gonna be in the area for, you know, the winter and what have you. Come shortly after December, we're gonna be snowbirds. So if you need additional information, my phone number is there, and I do have nationwide coverage.
Well, let's see if we can try to get something, Joe, in the second week of November before it starts getting too cold.
I'd appreciate it, gentlemen, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bar. Is there anybody else in the crowd that wishes to address the board of trustees regarding township-related specific business?
Excuse me a minute, I gotta give you the flash drive, it's in a little here.
Give that to Joe.
Joe. Joe, make sure that gets back to you, Mr. Bar.
I have copies, and I'm gonna send a copy to the Canton City Council and also to the Stark County Trustees.
And Joe, can you burn a CD of that? Are you mailing?
Did you? All right, anybody else under public speaks? Name and address for the record, three minutes. Oh, we were nineteen-hundred with one of us, Kent, Ohio. I would just like a, a status update as to what's going on, just for nineteen-hundreds property. Two weeks ago, you advised Ms. Cortello to give you some sort of a plan within three days, like Friday of that week, as to what was gonna happen. I don't know if that happened or not, but I would like to know where we stand now. Considering I've been coming here four and a half months, I just kinda like to know where we are, what's going on.
You were here the last time, right? And I talked about what the plan was. She's being fined a hundred dollars a day. Would the, the whole thing for me talking to her, that was after the meeting, I'm not sure that you were even involved in that conversation.
No, I, I was just here.
Okay.
Did anything come with that? Did anything?
Yeah, there's been some communication, but there, at this point, as you can see, that nothing's been moved or.
Well, actually, she did get rid of the truck.
Oh, good.
The tow truck is gone. I don't know who took it, where it went, but it's gone.
Okay, it's due to me.
It's something, it's something.
Yeah, so yeah, but no, other than that, no, there's been no, no change, other than the, the day the fine continues.
Is there a limit to that? The, the timeframe, I mean, is there a limit to how long you're gonna let that build?
My board will make that decision as we get, probably, like we talked about last time, towards the end of the year. We'll look at that as a cost-benefit analysis, they'll make a decision, and we'll go from there.
We're not gonna spend more legal expense to collect fees that are less than our legal budget.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll look at that, and I would guess probably towards, probably our last meeting of the year, we'll be a time to take a look at where we're at on that and to basically make the decision.
Any idea on when or if the legislation's gonna be given to change?
That's something that I are working on, the whole zoning book this winter. He gets a little bit slowed down and. He gets a little bit slowed down and that'll be part of the entire zoning change, but that's, believe me, that's at the top of the list.
The deal to sell my property is dated at the end of the year. So if it goes beyond that, then she's inheriting this problem. And that's not, I'm, I'm almost positive to make contingency in the purchase agreement. So anything that can be done before the end of the year would be greatly appreciated to, to ease the sale and ease. So that, I mean, I inherited her from the previous owner of my building. I don't wanna do it again twenty years later just to keep handing it down if possible.
Sure.
If you can, do sell it, I'd sure appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anybody else in the crowd that wishes to address the board? We're in, that's your matters. Okay. Kind of wrap up our public speaks. It takes us to Concerns of Trustees, I think my, my fellow board members. So we got a couple, uh, voice scout topic, the crowd this evening. What type of, uh, badges are we working on tonight?
Communications.
Communications. Both of you?
Yeah.
Communications. What troop?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Mr. Black, what troop are you in?
I was in troop forty-two on a, um, you don't follow church?
Eagle Scout or boot, so.
Eagle Scout.
Nineteen sixty.
What was that? You go nineteen sixty, right?
No. It was not the six, nineteen fifty-eight.
There was not?
And I bet that we're gonna wrap up Concerns of Trustees.
No, it's November nineteen fifty-eight, it's actually.
Well, if, if there's anything you guys have after the meeting, that needs signed, just for merit badge credit and stuff like that, feel free to see any board members, but thanks for coming out tonight.
Nothing else, my trustees, concerns of the fiscal officer. Takes us to approval of meeting minutes for October fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen, which I will soon move.
A second.
Thanks for God's help. Roll call. Mr. Leo, yes, Mr. Gevasis? Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hopp? Mr. Hopp?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I thought you were German, sorry. You're right.
All right, we do have a need for executive session, so being hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn to executive session at six fifty-three PM from this regular meeting of October twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, is authorized on our Ohio revise code one two one dot two two G for the purposing consideration of one A, appointment of a public employee or official, one B, appointment of a public employee or official free of conference with the law director or other routine counsel concerning pending or in court action. Discussion, roll call. Chris Calino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hopp?
Yes.
Oh, we forgot to congratulate Scott on his engagement.
That's a good one.